Okay, I'd like to call to order the October 17, 2017, regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council. Roll call.
Bachway.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Dickens.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. Item two, Student Leadership Awards. I know there are two fine young kids, students, from Horace Mann Elementary. And I can't wait to give you your awards. Would you come on up?
Jim's true colors.
Batman.
Lane.
Oh, that's where he is.
Yeah, so maybe I could stand between you, I guess. So, my daughter went to Horace Mann, did you know that? She was a man Mustang, yeah, when she graduated, I don't know, a few years ago, is now a student at the University of Iowa. Yeah, and I live like two blocks away from Horace Mann. Yeah, so I'm a big fan, as you can tell. Okay, so, what do we have here? I think Jose, you're gonna be first, Jose, so maybe you could read your paper there, and then I'll read the Student Leadership Award for you, okay? So, here you go. I can hold it.
Thank you for the people who nominated me because they noticed me by doing the right thing. I think I got nominated because my friends see me like a good person and a helpful guy. I help others people in their learning because this is, it is not fair that kids that don't get their problem in class, and our teacher is busy sometimes and that nobody, no one helps them. And another reason is when some students are done with their work, they start to play around and being loud. So I think it's unfair that kids that aren't done with their work get distracted by other students. It is important to be a good citizen because without good citizens, our world will be messier than now.
Very good, thank you. So, I probably should have read the award first anyhow, but it says, "Student Leadership Award. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Horace Mann Elementary, as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize Jose Amador as an outstanding student leader. Your community is proud of you. Presented by the Iowa City City Council, October 2017." So, there's yours. Thanks. And, Liliana Messner.
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 Yeah.
Is next. Okay, so the award reads exactly the same as what I just read, except it has Liliana's name on it. So, would you read your statement, please?
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. I believe I was nominated because I try to help people as, be as optimistic as possible because it creates a better environment and an overall better day for, I hope, everyone. I also try to be as helpful as I can in general. I, I try to keep people happy even if it's hard to look past the bad things in our life, but I would, because I would rather have everyone else in the world be happy than just myself, because that would be self-centered. I believe a good citizen is someone who focuses on the benefits of the community because if everyone spends time doing the wrong thing, it takes away from the things we should be doing to better the community. Thank you.
Very good. I know there's some pretty proud parents out here and other relatives, so congratulations to you for doing a great job helping to bring up your kids. I also note that this is the 100th anniversary of Horace Mann Elementary, so, wow, 100 years, can you imagine that? It's been around that long? Unbelievable. Here you go, here's your award. It says the same thing as Jose's does, but has your name on it, okay? Okay, join me, please, in congratulating our great. Bear with me, please, it's now a bit hot with this in the room. So, item three is a special presentation by Josh Shamburger from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Good evening, Josh.
Good evening, Mayor. Congratulate the kids, but they're gone, so, for them. Also excited, their school's about to get done, so that's fantastic. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, my name is Josh Shamburger, and I have the pleasure of serving as the President of the Iowa City Cora Ville Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. I'm joined here today by Nick Pfeifer, our Director of Marketing Communications. We're here on behalf of the local organizing committee behind the recent UCI Telanet Cyclocross World Cup. As many of you know, this was the second consecutive year that North America hosted two of these globally broadcast races, with Iowa City having served as a back-to-back host city. Once again, Iowa City was the center of the cycling world for a weekend in September with a televised viewing audience of more than 8 million people. Things were a little more challenging this year due to the races taking place during a Hawkeye home football game, but the weather was perfect and our community stepped up once again to truly set the bar for how a World Cup city should host an event. And those aren't my words, those are truly the words from UCI and the professional riders. Over 350 of our neighbors volunteered for the three-day event that attracted more than 10,000 visitors and approximately 1.7 million in local visitor expenditures. I want to especially thank Jeff Fruin and the City of Iowa City for their continued support of this event. People from all over the world know Iowa City for its literary heritage, they know Iowa City for its wrestling greatness, but they also know Iowa City and Iowa for its love and passion for cycling. It's only because of the support of Jeff and Tom Marcus before him, who helped us land this event, Jeff's entire team, people like Captain Troy Kelsey, Darian Nagel-Gam, Julie Johnson, and certainly all of you that Iowa City has held in such a high regard. I know I saw many of you out there over the weekend, I know I was out running everywhere, so I'm sure all of you were there, but I saw Susan in Kingsley and John and Pauline. Mayor, thank you for being out there and for your recognizing of this as not only an important economic impact, but the social impact this has on our community. On behalf of race founder Dr. John Meehan, course director Ben Anderson, and the entire World Cup Cyclocross Committee, I'm pleased to present you with a scaled-down replica, it's very scaled-down, of the official Telanet UCI World Cup backdrop that was broadcast all over the world for three hours last month. I'm sure Jeff and Simon will find a great place to hang it here, somewhere at City Hall or elsewhere. So, I'll put it up here, Mayor, if you want.
All right. Maybe could we set it right here?
Yeah.
Maybe just turn it around.
Turn it around here. All right, it looks good.
Fabulous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great event.
Great seeing you, Josh. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks for all your work on it, Josh, you and your staff.
For sure. So hopefully we'll learn in a couple months whether we do some more cycling with RagBite next year.
That's right.
Well, I know you have many other events coming up, you know, we have.
World Cup Wrestling, yep. A marathon now, so it should be fun.
Are you gonna run in the marathon?
No, I don't run marathons. My bike.
Maybe Julie will, though.
Julie's run them all, everywhere, so, thank you.
Good deal, thank you. All right, item four is Proclamations. We have two proclamations to read tonight. The first is Change Your Battery Day. Whereas the City of Iowa City is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas between the hours 11, of 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM are the peak alarm times for fire deaths, when people tend to be asleep, excuse me, and whereas almost two-thirds of home fire deaths in the United States resulted from fires in homes within operable smoke alarms or no-smoke alarms, and whereas the designation of a special day to remind residents of Iowa City to change the batteries in their smoke alarms, timed to coincide with the fall ritual of changing clocks, would greatly diminish the chance of this tragedy occurring in Iowa City, and whereas smoke alarms should be replaced every 10 years, and whereas November the 5th, 2017, is the day the citizens of Iowa City changed their clocks from daylight savings time to standard time, now therefore I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim November the 5th, 2017, to be Change Your Clock, Change Your Battery Day in Iowa City, and urge all residents to change their smoke alarm batteries and install new smoke alarms to replace smoke alarms if they are 10 years or older. Zach, I think you're gonna come up, we have one of our terrific firefighters to accept this proclamation.
Just real briefly, thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council, for recognizing this special day in the fire service, but I want to assure you as the Iowa City Fire Department that this is a message that we preach all year long, the importance of working smoke detectors and how they save lives, from the elementary kids to the senior citizen groups that we work with and talk to. This is just a very important message, and without working smoke detectors, it's an uphill battle for us and our jobs, so, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. The next proclamation has to do with United Nations Day, and I'm especially proud to read this particular proclamation, given recent statements by some other elected official. Whereas the United Nations was founded in 1945, and the anniversary of the day on which the UN Charter came into force is observed each year on October the 24th, and whereas the United Nations promotes peace and security, development, democracy, economic prosperity, global health and human rights around the world, and is vital now more than ever, and whereas the global goals for sustainable development were unanimously adopted by all 193 member nations of the United Nations in 2015, creating a common set of voluntary priorities for action on combating poverty, promoting sustainable economic growth, and advancing human dignity worldwide, whereas the United States has a long tradition of international leadership, and has shown bipartisan commitment to advancing the global goals at the national and local level through such important initiatives as US support for global health and local leadership on combating human trafficking, whereas a bipartisan poll revealed that more than eight out of 10 voters say it is important that the, that the United States maintain an active role within the UN, and whereas organizations and residents of Iowa City are active in local efforts to advance the global goals in our community, whereas Iowa City has a target for reducing greenhouse gas emissions in keeping with the Paris Climate Agreement and Global Goal 13, whereas the Johnson County Chapter of the United Nations Association of the USA is committed to educating and mobilizing our local communities to build a stronger network of global citizens and leaders to create a more prosperous, safe, just, and sustainable world for all, now therefore I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 20, oh, it says 2016, we have to change this, 2017 to be United Nations Day, and encourage everyone to join in observing this day and focusing on the vision of a world filled with peace and justice, brought about by the cooperation of all nations. Jim, Jean, I don't know, who all is gonna accept this proclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Maria Padron is a member of our board of the Johnson County United Nations Association. She's a native of Argentina, but has been a citizen here for many, many years. She's employed here in Iowa City and is a great board member. So, and I'd also like to introduce Jim Olson, who is Secretary of our local chapter of the United Nations Association. We thank you for the proclamation and for getting the year and the date right. The UN is 72 years old this year, and we're kicking off the week with a celebration of the world's children, which will be held Sunday afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00 at the University Club on Melrose Avenue, and we invite any and all of you to come if you, if you can make it. So, thank you very much, and peace and prosperity to all.
Jean, it's wonderful to see you, and if I remember correctly, you will be making the keynote speech at the Human Rights Breakfast. I'm really looking forward to hearing it.
If my clock gets me up on time.
All right, so, we should move to item number five, Consider Adoption of the Consent Calendar as Presented or Amended.
So moved, second.
Moved by Bachway, second by Thomas. Discussion, I want to note two items. Item 5D10 is a resolution accepting the work for the Ashton House site improvements as a result of a REAP grant. I don't know if any of you have been to the Ned Ashton House, but the improvements made there are really terrific. Julie and I were down there, and Jeff was down there just a few days ago, so, it's wonderful to see them. Item 5E12 sets a November 6 public hearing on an ordinance that would restrict sales of consumer fireworks in Iowa City to industrial areas. I know that a lot of people are interested in fireworks and how they're used and misused and so on, so they might be interested in that particular public hearing. Okay, so, any other discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment about the Ashton House. I'd been to an event there, I believe it was League of Women Voters event, and so a lot of folks that were attending had never been there, and, but that's the conversation throughout the room, was how beautiful that venue was, and what, especially the landscaping around the area, so, compliments and kudos, and it's great jewel, and we should promote it a lot more than we do.
Absolutely. I just rode on the bike trail that runs on the riverside, right next to the Ashton House, earlier today, so it was really fun to do that. So, bravo to the Parks and Recreation Department. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Bachway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes, motion carries seven to zero. Item seven, Planning and Zoning Matters. Items.
Community comment.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Item six, Community Comment, I apologize. Anyone who would like to address any topic that's not on the formal meeting agenda is invited to do so now. I'd like you to come up, state your name, and keep your, limit your comments to not more than five minutes. So, is there anyone who would like to address us on, you know, topics that are not on the formal meeting agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we'll turn to item seven. Item seven, Planning and Zoning Matters, thank you for catching that, Kingsley. Item 7A, Cardinal Point West, Part Two. And this is an ordinance that would conditionally rezone 28.03 acres from interim development research park, IDRP zone, to high-density, single-family residential RS12 zone for 5.35 acres, low-density, multifamily RM12 zone for 3.3 acres, and rural residential RR1 zone for 19.38 acres for property located west of Camp Cardinal Road and south of Kennedy Parkway. Before I open the public hearing, I need to know if anybody needs to make ex parte disclosures. No, okay, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Uh, yeah, so, good evening, John.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The overhead shows the location of the proposed project. While the total size is about 28 acres, the majority of the property would be reserved in outlots. There are wooded ravines and slopes. The development activity would take place on the previously farmed area in between the wooded ravines. This map shows a zoning pattern in color. The pink area would be the low-density multifamily, which would be townhouses. The yellow area would be high-density, single-family, a complex, excuse me, a combination of single-family and duplex structures, and then the blue areas would be set aside as outlots, as, as private open space. This is just another graphic showing those zoning designations on the property. The property is located south of Kennedy Parkway, off an extension of Preston Lane, just on the west side of Camp Cardinal Boulevard. This is a concept plan that the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council reviewed when the first phase of this development, this single-family loop street, was developed last year. The proposed concept is generally consistent with the concept that we saw at that time, meaning townhouse development in the center of the property, bracketed by these wooded ravines, which would remain open space. And this is zooming in on the design for the project. Again, townhouses in the middle, there would be single-family lots on the, it appears to be north, but it's more like the eastern part of the property, and duplex lots on the western part of the property. A couple things that came up during staff and Planning and Zoning Commission review were the width of the alley, or private drive, that serves the rear of the townhouses. Staff had recommended and Planning and Zoning agreed to narrow that, that drive to 18 feet wide, to discourage excess pavement, discourage speeding traffic, and also landscaping being required both at the ends of the townhouse units, you know, facing the duplexes across the street, and also landscape areas in between the driveways along the alley. So the recommendation is with a condition, both for a narrower alley and with the final plat, a final landscaping plan for, for this area. I would also note, given your previous discussion, the residential streets are proposed at 26 feet wide, which is currently our narrowest residential street standard. I do expect there would be on-street parking in this neighborhood because of the townhouse style development. In discussing traffic issues with the applicant, the applicant has also proposed what are called neck downs at the intersections, these two intersections with Preston Lane, those would neck down to about 22 feet in width to encourage slowing down traffic as they go through the This is just another view with the sensitive areas identified, all the hash marks you see here are all steep slopes, and, and it's all woodlands, but those would be set aside. With that, staff recommends approval, and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, and I would also point out that the condition regarding the narrower private drive, the Planning and Zoning recommended, we did receive a, an updated graphic with that narrower drive shown on it. Oh, the other issue that came up at Planning and Zoning was regarding a sidewalk connection along the west side of Camp Cardinal Road, Camp Cardinal Boulevard bordering this property. That sidewalk has also now been shown on the development plans. With that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Okay, well, yeah, so, do you all have any questions for John?
Just super quick, how many single-family homes, how many duplexes, and how many townhomes? What are the numbers on that?
Nine, six, thirty-two. Nine, nine single families, six duplex lots, so 12 duplex units, six duplex lots, and 33 townhomes. Thank you.
John, on the, on that alleyway question, as I remember in the P&amp;Z minutes, the, the standard alleyway width is 16 feet?
In the older parts of town, it is, yes.
What, what is the alleyway width in the Peninsula and neighborhood, do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I don't know.
Because I, I was trying to scale it off Johnson County GIS, and it scaled at less than that, so I, I have a little bit of a concern even with the, I mean, if 16 is, is considered acceptable, I mean, I'll just leave it there, but it's, you know, that was a compromise, it sounds like, that you, you reached with the.
The, the developer, the applicant, would have preferred what they submitted, which was a 21-foot, foot-wide.
It's hard to understand why it has to be that wide. Are, are there other questions for John?
Do we have comments now, or just questions for him?
Well, that, yeah, just don't get into the decision part of this, ask questions if you have questions.
Well, I'll, I'll state a positive thing first, though, I'm, I'm glad to see the woodland's preservation, that's, that's good, but my question is about, do you have any idea what the price range of these units are going to be?
I don't, and that's, that's typically not a part of our analysis.
Right, it wouldn't be, because you'd mentioned the first phase, and one, from what I've heard from folks in that area are that those homes are, are pretty pricey, running like $350,000 to $400,000.
The, to the north?
In the first phase, yeah.
Yep.
And, and that's concerning to me, that if these units would also be in, in that kind of a high price range, that doesn't seem to be what we really need.
Well, I would say, at least for the duplex and the townhouse units, those will be on smaller.
Smaller.
Smaller lots, smaller footprints of structures.
Okay, thank you.
John, I have a question about Borlaug School.
Sure.
I know we had another rezoning for, for another part of this development earlier, and I think at the time I, maybe some other council members expressed concern about kids crossing this Camp Cardinal Boulevard, right?
Right.
Yeah, so my concerns are redoubled. I don't want to get us in a situation where we find that kids are having to run across that street in order to get to school. What are we gonna do to make it sure that intersection is safe for them to cross?
I know the, the MPO has had some conversations with City of Corahville and the school, the school, and their preference is that the, the crosswalk be on the north side of the intersection, because the school's on the north side. That's actually in the City of Corahville, so the MPO, I know, has been working with Corahville. I'll have to get you an update on where that's at.
It'd be very good to know that before a second reading on this. Other questions for John? Well, I'm hearing no other questions, thank you, John. So I need to ask you if you are inclined to vote in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. If not, I would have to continue the public hearing to allow for consultation with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, are you inclined to vote in accord with the Commission's recommendation?
Would recommending that the alleyway width be 16 feet be considered in accord?
Well, when you close the public hearing as well, the conditions are, the conditional zoning agreement, it's gonna be as it stands. I don't know where the, where's the width addressed in the plat?
The width is addressed in the conditional zoning agreement.
Okay, so.
That, that has been signed.
We'd, if you want to explore that, then we'd have to keep the public hearing open.
Do you want to explore that?
Personally, I, as I said, it sort of speaks to what we were talking about on the work session, and on, on this alleyway, if it's anything like the alleyways in the north side, you typically only have cars traveling in one direction at any given time, so it gets into this question of, you know, you have, you know, the wider the alleyway, the more likely there will be higher speeds, combined with the fact that it's more paving. If, if you look at the design there, there are driveways that look to be equivalent in width to the alleyway, so you have close to 50 feet of pavement there. It would reduce cost to the contractor, I would, or the, the developer, to, to narrow the alleyway as well, so I, I'm not quite understanding the, why, then, why there's
Do the rest of you have an opinion about this particular point? Would you be inclined to favor the idea of indicating, signaling that we'd like to see a narrower alleyway?
Eleanor, what's the procedure, basically, from that standpoint? We extend the public hearing and then we'd have to consult with the P&amp;Z Commission?
Well, I'm not, I think we have to offer a consult to P&amp;Z. If it's on that alley width, then it very well might not want to do that. But the bigger issue is, it's part of the conditional zoning agreement because it's reflected in the site plan, which the conditional zoning agreement says it must be in compliance with the site plan, which is attached to the CZA. So you can't, if you want to change that term, you need to keep the public hearing open, and you can do that by continuing the public hearing to the next time.
Jim, this doesn't have to do with the alley width, but I echo your concerns about the safety of the students or the school. And I'd like to see a more definite plan before accepting this for that.
I think John's going to come back to us with information about what Correville intends to do at our second reading or during the continued public hearing, two weeks if we do that.
That's not an issue for the public hearing, because you could vote no on it in the second reading. That's not reflected in the conditional zoning agreement.
So I understand the point about continuing the public hearing. We can certainly do that. Assuming we do that, and it's clear there's majority sentiment for wanting a narrower alley, what then would transpire?
I'm just curious, who's the majority that wants a narrower?
Well, no, I said assuming. I don't know.
I thought you said there was.
At that point, there would be discussions with the applicant.
Now, this is being built to the current standards that we have. We haven't changed our standards yet, right? That's, so this follows what was presented, follows our current standards.
And our current standards being what? Because didn't you say it was 21, or the developer had requested 21?
Or is there a certain standard for alleyways?
I know we're working toward it, but this project is here now.
I believe, and I just conferred with Ron Kenney, the modern standard for an alley is 20 feet. The developer did agree to go down to 18 feet.
What did the staff recommend? What did the staff advocate?
16 to 18.
So the developer agreed to cut it down to what the staff thought was appropriate. Is that correct? Okay.
One of the things to keep in mind here, and while this would necessarily be a city operation for this particular development, is the waste pickup will be off that alley. So even if it's a private hauler, you're looking at a larger vehicle coming through there. Councilman Thomas mentioned the Peninsula and the narrower alleys in the Peninsula, and that's proven to be very difficult for our operations. We can't run our standard waste trucks down those alleys to pick up trash. We have to run a smaller trucks just for the Peninsula neighborhood to pick up that trash. And I don't know what those widths are, but that's some of the complications you can get into when you have these alleys that function, have that waste function in them.
Would the alley be a public street or privately owned and maintained?
It would be private, privately owned and maintained.
You wanted to say something, I think.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm in favor of closing the public hearing and voting. I think the standard, well, I'll just say that at this point. I can discuss more once we did make a decision, but.
Okay, so I need to know if folks are inclined to support the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'll just say, for my part, I'll support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. I think the alley's too wide. What's most important for me is getting the kids to school safely. That's crucial. So, I don't know. How about the rest of you?
Supportive of closing the public hearing. Saying?
But there are four in favor of closing the public hearing. Okay, so that's what I'll do. Unless, is there anybody else who wants to address this topic? Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move first, consideration.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, second by Botchway. Discussion.
Related to this topic of lane width for the alleyway, I totally hear what you're saying, John. I agree with you on that particular topic, but that said, I don't feel like this particular end, part of the process is where we make that modification. That's my view. I think if we have the standards, they need to be developed according to that standard. And I think at some point in the future, if we want to change that, that should be part of a separate process. But I don't like making policy at this stage, and I think they need to be rely on very clear directions in terms of what we expect from our staff and what our standards are. But I would agree with you that we do at some point in the future need to look at that. One second thing I just want to quick bring up, I love this development in the sense it's a mix of housing types. And I hear Pauline's concern about some of the more expensive units, but I think that's terrific in the sense that it's also balanced out by the townhomes. And it seems like it's a little bit of a trend. I'm seeing more and more townhomes, duplexes, and single families working together in terms of a development, and I think that's a great concept, so we have that socioeconomic diversity to the extent that we can in our development. So I just want to give kudos to the staff and the developer. I like the, especially in this part of town, you know, in terms of getting that density right with the mix of incomes.
I would agree with you on both points, Rockne. I think when we have standards in place and developers have gone through and done, had all the engineering, all the design work, had all the drawings done, I don't think we should be coming in, like you're saying, Rockne, at the last second, trying to change policy or make those changes. I think if we feel as a council that in these developments, those back alleys should be narrower, then we need to be looking at that as what our standards are. But given Jeff's comments on the fact that we're having to run special trucks through the Peninsula, I think we've really got to look at what makes sense, but that's a discussion for another time. And again, I agree entirely on the idea of this mixed housing. That's why I'm excited also about the Form Based Code down around Alexander and stuff. It gets to the point John's made previously about the missing middle, trying to bring these diversified types of homes together in the same area at different price points, so I think it's good.
So I would agree and disagree in part. I mean, well, because it kind of goes back to Pauline's point. I'm not necessarily seeing the same thing that y'all are seeing on this price point. I mean, I'm thinking that it's going to be.
Rezoning is not dependent on price points.
I'm not, no. So I'm looking at it, I apologize. I guess I'm looking at it from a macro level, because when I look at that area in general, I feel like that's a priced-out area. Like, I'm not seeing, I mean, it was just because you mentioned it, Pauline, so when everybody was talking, I was just kind of looking at whatever that graphic was, John, that was just showing the area in general. And I was like, man, like, what different, what kind of diversity as far as income housing types do we have in that area? And I agree, this is not the time to think about it, but I guess I want to call attention to it in the same sense that Pauline is, because I think that's, I mean, most of the land is now being developed, and I don't think there's any other time or situation that we can do something in there. And if we can, we may need to, just because I just feel like that's just an area that's going to be a relatively unaffordable area for many, and that's somewhat problematic for me. I mean, somewhat problematic from the sense that I didn't think about it before. I mean, it's problematic from the sense to me that, golly, that's a large chunk of Iowa City that's, we don't, and I could think about it from a standpoint, we don't have a lot of land that is getting developed, and so it's just problematic. But in general, kind of going back to why I agree in part, you know, I like the development. I like how it's used and how it kind of abuts the woodland area as well, but that's concerning.
I'd just like to point out, if you were to zoom out of this area, there's a definite mix of housing types around here. Matter of fact, the council's approved a couple of workforce housing tax credit applications from the same developer and adjacent properties. And so you're kind of at a very micro scale here. I think as you zoom out, you'd see a greater diversity.
You talking about those townhomes?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking.
Not these, I'm talking about the other ones up there.
No, I'm talking multifamily units.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just, you know, I support the project. I think there is, you know, for this area, a wide, as we've been saying, a wider range of housing types. So for this type of development, I think there is some income diversity that will be generated by that. The use of the alley, I'm very supportive of. There is a small amount of open space there in one of the entries to the alley on the left side of the image. And getting, just quickly again, getting back to the alley, the staff had said that 16 feet was okay, and I would assume that meant in terms of service vehicles as well. But, you know, I understand the point, too, and this is why we had that conversation earlier. We really need to be very clear on what those standards are so that we aren't in these situations. This is, I don't like being in a situation where we see something that is of a concern to us.
Any further discussion? I'd just like to observe, given what John said, that the alley is privately owned, will have to be privately maintained. I don't particularly want to get into the business of telling them exactly how wide their privately-owned alley needs to be. So given what everybody else has said, I'm going to vote in favor of the proposed rezoning. Roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item eight, prohibit tobacco use in parks. Ordinance amending Title VI entitled Public Health and Safety, Chapter 10 entitled Smoke-Free Places, and Title X entitled Public Ways and Property to prohibit the use of tobacco, including smoke, with tobacco in all city parks. This is pass and adopt. Is there a motion to do that?
Move adoption.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, second by Botchway. We voted six to one on this twice in a row, so we're probably not going to discuss it any further. We'll just do the vote. I'm not hearing anybody want to talk, so roll call, please.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
No.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one and passes six to one. Item nine, Riverfront Crossings Park Phase Three. This is a resolution approving, authorizing, and directing the mayor to execute and the city clerk to attest an agreement by and between the city of Iowa City and Confluence Incorporated to provide consultant services for the Riverfront Crossings Park Phase Three project.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botchway, second by Dickens. Discussion.
Just exciting to keep it moving forward.
Yeah, keep it moving on.
It's moving fast.
We heard a presentation earlier in our work session from Julie Seidel Johnson about all the progress that's been made out there. Kudos to the Parks and Recreation Department, and it's really great to see all the progress. Thank you. I'm hearing no discussion. Yeah, no discussion? Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item X, wastewater treatment facility backup generation and electrical distribution upgrade project.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, second by Botchway. Discussion. Ron, did you want to talk about this, give us, us and the public a hint about it?
I just mentioned that, so PRVN's out of North Liberty. They have already done a concept on this project for us. Basically, this will upgrade the generator onsite to facilitate the whole facility. When we did our consolidation, we just were going with the original generator. And then along with that, there's distribution within the plant site that will also be upgrading, along with some resiliency. There's some low areas that will want to elevate things so that there's no issues with water in the future.
Okay, good deal. And the cost is going to be paid for by wastewater revenues, is that right? Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion from council members?
Sounds important.
Yeah, it sounds important. It's like listening to the Soudos discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, hearing no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 11, belt filter press replacement. This is a resolution awarding contract and authorizing the mayor to sign and the city clerk to attest a contract for construction of the city of Iowa City Belt Filter Press Project.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, second by Botchway. Ron, please explain to the public what this is all about.
So the belt filter presses take the biosolids and squeeze the water out of them, and then they go and we dry them, and then they get field-applied. So this is the process of actually squeezing the water out of it so that we can then use it. It saves time in regards to the processing of that. The belt filter presses that we have in place are original to the plant, so they've been in service and they've outlived their useful life. With this project, there will be some upgrades in the ventilation in that area to help the corrosive nature that's in that room. And then also, the alternates, one and three, are for some door upgrades and then also driveway to the, with the door where these are at. So we got great bids, and it's a well-needed project down at the plant.
Good deal. And it's also funded by wastewater revenue?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 12, workforce housing tax credits. This is a resolution in support of the Dubuque and Prentice Investments LC, LLC, application for workforce housing tax incentives program from the Iowa Economic Development Authority to construct residential housing at 225 East Prentice Street and committing local funds to the project. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Botchway, second by Dickens. Discussion. Good evening, Tracy.
Hi, I'm Tracy Hiesche with Neighbor Services. We received another application for the workforce housing tax credits. Just as a reminder, this is our 12th request. We have approved 11 so far for 771 units. This is a program that is designed by the state, basically for, it's targeted to middle-income households to encourage redevelopment. There are financial incentives that reduces sales tax liability and gives a 10% investment tax credit per unit. We received an application from the developer, Kevin Digman. The name of the legal applicant will be the Dubuque and Prentice Investments LC. So they want to build 60, up to 60 units at 225 East Prentice Street. It is zoned, they'd have to get it rezoned, available probably for Riverfront Crossings, crossings, Central Crossing. It is compatible with our comprehensive plan. That being said, this is a very preliminary concept plan. We'll still have to look at floodplain issues, sensitive areas. It'll have to go through our design review, design requirements. So there's a lot of legislative approvals still need, still needed. However, all developers are trying to race for that queue. You know, it's a first-come, first-served application with, at the state. So the developers are submitting. There are a lot of approvals to go to, and I did put in the memo that catch-all disclaimer that your approval of the resolution does not commit you to, or the required local match does not imply any support for any future legislative processes. So this is just for them to submit the application to the state.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Tracy? Don't run away, I have one. Any questions?
Could you just quickly repeat how many applications we've had? Did you say we've approved 11 out of 12?
We've approved 11 for 771 new units.
771, thank you.
Not have been completed yet.
Okay.
But we have approved the, we've approved the local match for all those. And the local match is $1,000 per unit. So if we've already provided TIF financing, any type of financing, like we did General Fund, we provided $600,000 to Three Diamond Development for the senior housing going on William Street, we don't have to provide additional match. So if we've already provided some, we don't have to come back, but if we've provided no match, then we have to at least commit $1,000 per unit.
So Tracy, did those 11 that you'd approved, did they get the matching funds from the state then? Were they approved, also approved for that?
I don't know if all of them approved. They've all funded. Once they apply, the state doesn't come back and notify us, oh, they've been approved. But the developers I've talked to said they've submitted and they've been, they've received a letter saying that they are awarded. Now, what they have to do at the end to prove that they've qualified, this program, as a reminder, does not require them to sell it to income-restricted people or set a maximum rent or sales tax. The state just looks at, is the cost to construct less than $200,000. So these developers will have to go back to the state and show their budget to qualify. And then when that happens, then we'll have to, we'll have to provide our match. We're only providing our match if they're going to get the federal or the state credits.
that focus on the redevelopment or repurposing of existing structures. But what we're looking at here, and I think all the others we've looked at, have to do with new structures. So I'm confused. It's the first time I've noticed this, so can you help me out?
That was copied from the state code. It's just redevelopment. And I guess they, it doesn't have to be, it can be new construction. There's no requirement. Can't be a grayfield or brownfield. Can be new construction. So it's any type of development that fits their under $200,000 per unit cap.
Boy, if as quoted from the code, redevelopment or repurposing of existing structures-
I know what you're saying. But yeah, they have approved-
This is puzzling. Maybe-
Well, in existing structure, there used to be existing structures there.
So it's repurposing what was there?
Yeah, in this case, there's, it's the old plum supply building, so it's still there. They're not going to repurpose it. It'll be a demo and rebuild, but council's approved-
That's me interpreting it, huh? Yeah, all right.
Yeah, ultimately, the state's the one that interprets it. If someone applies and doesn't meet that standard, then our match is out. But council has approved greenfield sites and fill sites with structures, infill sites without structures.
I know. It's the first time I've caught this language, and so it confuses me.
I'll double check.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Any further questions for Tracy? Thank you. Anybody else want to address this topic? Okay, council discussion? Oh, yeah, there's no, yeah, any council discussion?
I guess I might be another question for Tracy, as far as if it is 60 units. And from your experience, do you anticipate that there would be a demand for that number of units for this kind of a structure, for these middle-income?
Yeah, since there's no income or sales restrictions, it's in a, it's a favorable location. So I don't anticipate a problem with the demand for the property. There are 61 one-bedroom units. And it's up to 60. So due to site plan configurations, they might not be able to get 60.
Get 60, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botschway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 13, council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. I'm going to read several open positions. We've received no applicants for them, so we have to re-advertise to November 14th for all of these. So we have two vacancies to fill unexpired terms upon appointment to the Airport Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy for a Jefferson Street representative for a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission, and one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Telecommunications Commission. So again, are we going to re-advertise and applications will be due on the 14th? Yeah, thank you. Item 14, announcement of vacancies. Again, applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Board of Adjustment, two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Board of Appeals, one's for a licensed plumber, and another for an HBA rep or qualified by experience in training. No, I don't know, both are both of, do those criteria apply to both of those positions? I guess I'm not sure about that.
I believe it's one for each.
One for each, thank you. Two vacancies to fill four-year terms on the Park and Recreation Commission, three vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Human Rights Commission, two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Public Art Advisory Committee, and two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Senior Center Commission. Applications for these positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November the 14th. All right, community comment. Ben, I know you routinely speak at this moment.
Yep, I'll just keep it short and sweet, not too many announcements. Just another reminder, tomorrow is our city council candidate forum at 7 o'clock in the IMU on the third floor. Feel free to, like I said, it's student-oriented, but feel free to bring your own community members, whoever you would like to be there. For those who are participating who are in this room, let me know if you have any last-minute questions or concerns, and we can try to address those if necessary. Also, tomorrow morning, between 8:00 to 10:00, we have MOCA's for mental health, where UISG is handing out free coffee, but also giving mental health resources to students who pass by. And then also, I believe it's October 27th, don't quote me quite on the date, the Friday before Halloween, UISG will be posted up downtown in Blackhawk Mini Park for our Hungry Hawks event, where we'll be handing out free snacks. But then also, resources on safe drinking habits, trying to make sure that our student body is, you know, practicing safe, safe behavior. But other than that, that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. All right, item 16, city council information. Maybe we'll start with Pauline and move to the right.
Well, I'm really excited. Tracy's left her room, but she and I are leaving on a flight at 6:50 tomorrow morning, so I'm glad we're moving right along here to go to Henderson, Nevada for the Invest Health Pod convening. That's where only about 10 of the 50 cities in the group get together on a certain topic, which the topic's going to be community engagement. So we're looking forward to attending that.
John?
Oh, nothing other than I happened to be in California when the worst fire ever to-
Tell me, John.
-to burn in an urbanized area took place, and that was quite an experience. So we here in Iowa have certain things to be thankful for. You know, we, you know, the conditions that generated this fire are not the conditions that you would find in Iowa. But it was truly an extraordinary event to witness.
Yeah.
How close to it were you?
We were in Sonoma County when the fire started, so we were about 20 miles. And it-
It's a blink of an eye.
It started in the middle of the night. That was part of the reason it was so catastrophic.
I've got two items. Attended a great event that, I guess I would say I-CAD hit another home run, I think, last Friday with, "An Honest Conversation" was the title of the program. They had it out at the Kirkwood Community College facility out in Oakdale. Five individuals who are relatively recent people to come to the Iowa City area, a variety of ages, et cetera, and jobs, and things that have brought them here. And so just to hear them talk about what they have found in Iowa City, what they like, and I would say it was 5-0, in fact, they love this place. Two of them native Californians who just talked about, you know, how great Iowa City was. One young man was talking about, he grew up, it sounded like in a fairly well-to-do family in the Silicon Valley area, and, you know, parents who all do. He says, you know, "I would never be able to buy property in California unless I inherited it." And he's here in mid-20s, and he's bought a townhouse. And so just, you know, the difference in terms of those kinds of situations. So it was a great conversation and great to hear. And let me tell you, when people are coming here from the outside, we sit up here as we're developing policy and looking at issues in the city. And I think sometimes if people listen to us, they might think that this is a terrible place, because we're always talking about things we want to improve, and, you know, things that should be better. But this is a really special place, a really, really special city and area. And these five people really were happy to be here, and, you know, all of them had come not expecting to stay, and now they're all saying, eh, I might. And some of them already decided, yeah, this is long-term, and others are saying, I could see myself maybe staying here. So it's a great event on I-CAD's part. Second, the, I'm not sure how many we've done now, but crisis intervention training is going on this week. And I was checking into the numbers. We have had 36 of our officers go through the crisis intervention training so far, and we've got another 15 going through this week. So that's going to put us up at 51 of our officers having gone through it by the end of this week. Just a fantastic event and good training. I'd gotten an email from Jessica Beckover, Jail Alternatives of the County. They, it really takes a village to put on this program, and so they were looking for people to bring breakfast in. And so I'm bringing part of the breakfast. I just pick it up at Hy-Vee and take it over. And Kingsley's doing it on Thursday, and so doing that for them. So great event, and thanks to all of our officers and people that are going through it.
Yeah, thanks to both of you for doing that, too.
Is it half?
Pardon?
Of officers, is it?
Is that half? No, it's 60 or 70%. We've got, I mean, we've got 80-some-odd sworn, and this is going to be 50, what did I say, 51 of them, so.
Cool.
We're getting up there.
Oh, nothing.
I'd like to thank the Inglard again for bringing David Bromberg and John Sebastian, who played for the Loving Spoonful.
What a day for a daydream, eh?
Yes, and if you believe in magic, they were. The two of them together, and John came back on stage and played a great harmonica. So it was, my wife and I were some of the youngest people in the crowd. So it was, it was a lot of fun. And on another note, Halloween is coming up, so just be safe out there. There's going to be a lot of very excited kids on the sidewalks and streets. So before our next council meeting, then Halloween will be upon us, so be careful.
Jim, are we updating on our committees now, or is that a separate agenda item?
It's separate.
Okay, so I won't discuss the City of Literature UNESCO issue. I'll do that a little bit later. Jim, you voted now, I think, three times against smoking in the park and, or to allow smoking in the park. And I actually ran into Feather Lacy the other day at the New Pie Co-op.
Was she mad at me?
She wasn't mad at you. She supported you, because she brought up this question of wood fire policy in the City of Iowa City. And I mentioned to Feather that I'm not going to support a change. I'm one of the people that do burn from time to time with the little, you know, things that you can buy. But I did think she brought up a good point, you know, in terms of you brought up this question of, well, how dangerous is cigarette smoke in our parks? I think there is an element of danger, but your point is, is that it's relatively modest in an open-air context. And, you know, I think Feather brought up some really valid points in terms of how dangerous is wood smoke, what do we need to look at into the future. I'm certainly not ready at this point to evaluate or change the existing policy that we have. But I think it'd be incumbent upon all of us as a community to, I think she did submit this, and that she submitted these materials for us to look very carefully at that. And another thing that she had brought up was this concept of, you know, in the olden days, we used to burn our leaves, and that was considered very routine. And then about 25 years ago, that was changed. So that was sort of a policy interaction, where I really wasn't expecting to think too much about that particular topic. But Feather, if you're listening, I did bring it up. And I think you bring up some really good points. And I think it's something we have to monitor closely, because really what it comes down to is air quality on that particular issue. The second thing, I guess, is a little bit more substantive, too. Mark McCollum has talked a lot, and we're going to address it, I think, in two weeks at the Parking District.
You know, we probably ought to do this in the work session, Rockney?
No, but he had correspondence, though. So I don't know if there was an issue to bring up. The only question I had, and maybe this would be for the subsequent work session, can we use funds from the Parking Improvement District for general funds? Because that's an issue that I just didn't know, and I don't know if I wanted to defer that. Maybe that'd be something we'd bring up later, but I did bring it up in the context of the correspondence that was brought tonight. Okay, so those two things.
Good, fair enough. Okay, I want to mention several items. No one, none of you mentioned the Book Festival, which I think was a terrific success. Not that I saw every event or whatever that was taking place, but I did sit in on one panel discussion, which was really superb. So bravo to John Kenyon and everybody else involved in putting on the Book Festival. Also, I attended the International Writing Program's Gala 50th Anniversary Celebration on October the 11th. Bravo to Chris Merrill and everybody else affiliated with that. There were a lot of people there, and they had a really good time, and it was a great thing to see being celebrated. Also, Jeff, Captain Kelsey, and I attended a refugee and immigrant recognition dinner a few nights ago. I don't know, we had a big, long room. I don't know if anybody else was there.
I couldn't read that.
Yeah, yeah. So congratulations to the members of the association for organizing that event. It was a pleasure to be there. I see Fatima has left. I think maybe she was there earlier. I mean, she was here earlier, and I think maybe she was there that night. Skip those two things. Tomorrow, I'm going to participate in a re-entry parole simulation, which will be fun, except the problem is, I'm going to get paroled, and I'm going to have a lot of trouble finding a job, I think. We'll see how that goes. But it's a simulation, understand? So I'm looking forward to it. The Economic Development Committee's going to meet at 8:00 AM here on the 19th of this month. The Ped Mall Design Open House will take place on the 26th of this month at the Sheraton Hotel from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. And there's going to be a Climate Action Plan public meeting at 6:30 PM in the Public Library on November the 2nd. I think I have all those dates and times right. So that's enough for me. Jeff?
Nothing.
Ashley?
I'll just add that there will be childcare for the Climate Action Committee meeting. The community meeting will include childcare at the library, so families are welcome to-
And that was publicly noticed, right?
Yeah, we're getting the word out there about the meeting, and I'll just note it again.
Yeah, great, thank you. Elder? All right. On that, given that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn to the work session.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Botschway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned to the work session.